Welcome. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. The Tuilla City Council is meeting in a work meeting. And this work meeting is being held at Tuilla City Hall. And the council chamber is located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio?
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis?
Present.
Councilman McCall?
Present.
Councilman Hanson?
Present.
And he's joining us by phone. And I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. We'll move on to item three, the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. Very excited to announce a couple of ribbon cuttings that we've attended in the last couple of weeks. And one is for remodeling of the Utah State University Building there at the end of Vine Street. They did a beautiful remodel. It's just a very inviting place to learn. And I just hope that our community will remember that we have a full university here for them to take classes and receive degrees. And it's just a beautiful, beautiful place and a beautiful event. Also, we had a remodeling of the Macy's store. So I didn't realize they had been here 25 years. Macy's been here 25 years. So the remodel is beautiful. And we just had a really, really great event. They have committed a lot of funds to remodel the store and serve our residents. And they were very, very grateful for the attendance at the ribbon cutting and for the great support that they get from our community. But Macy's is also a great partner and participate in supporting a lot of organizations within our community. They sell the tickets for the concerts and things for us, too. So we just appreciate their partnership. Also, Paul Hacking, the president of the Tuilla Technical College, has now officially retired. And I attended his retirement event last Friday. Again, a very bittersweet when people leave. We're happy for them that they can begin their retirement and enjoy that. But the college will not ever be the same without Paul. He brought that college in the last eight and a half years to just a new level. And we're just very grateful for his partnership in helping with our economic development. That's one of the businesses when they come here, they're so excited to have a place to partner with to learn the skills that they need for their employees. And then also, we have just received so much information when all of these new stores have opened. They're like breaking all kinds of records. And so John Perez, our Economic Development Director, notified all of the local television stations to let them know about all this great information. And we had two really wonderful news articles. So the links to those are on our social media, Facebook page. And it was KSL and Fox 13. And we were very, very grateful for them for covering this information because now John's phone is ringing off the hook. You would not believe the phone calls now that he's receiving from businesses who want to be in Tuilla. So it's finally happening, and I'm just very, very grateful for that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Winn. We'll move on to the council members' report. We will start with Councilwoman Manzio.
Sure. I agree. I echo the sentiments about USU. It's a beautiful remodel. I was able to attend staff meeting this week. We have great staff, and it was good to be there with them. I went to a pre-development meeting this morning. And the mayor and I met with Representative Nicoleen Peck just to talk about the Mid Valley Highway and the letter that we've support that we've sent to the legislature and just get her ideas on what we can do to support that Mid Valley Highway. And then I attended the League's LPC Legislative Whatever Meeting on Monday virtually. And I had some interesting information, too, about property taxes and some of the things upcoming in the legislature. So if you didn't listen to it, I would suggest listening to it. And that is all I have to report on.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goachis?
Thank you. I did attend the student gala dinner that was award night for the TATC. And I do want to echo what the mayor said about President Hacking's contributions to our community. He's been a fine representative and extremely gracious to work with. I also attended a virtual town hall meeting with John Curtis on the 7th. I attended the Veterans Breakfast. Kudos to Dave McCall, who spearheads that wonderful event that was held at the St. Marguerite's Church. And they provide a lovely breakfast. And the children from the school provide a great program besides the military presentation. So thanks, Dave, for your work in organizing that event. I participated in the post-election audit at the county. I want to recognize Tracy Shaw and her staff for conducting a successful election. It was a pleasure to be a part of that. Let's see. I also attended the Utah Women Leading Government in West Valley City with Marissa. And always good to learn from trusted leaders. So it was a good event. I'm sorry that I didn't get to attend some of those ribbon cuttings. I've been out of town with my family. But I did go to Macy's, and I got to try their new bread robot. And it's super cool.
Cool, huh?
Yeah, so you just push a little button, and you pick out a nice hot loaf of bread, and it comes out, and you put it in the sack. Anyway, just appreciate our businesses. We have some really great businesses that are our partners in Tuilla City. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hanson?
Um, we did all the same things last Wednesday night. We, you know, we had the results of the election verified, so we were there for that. And congratulations to all the people again that won there. And then I had a planning commission meeting and some of the other events that you guys mentioned over the busy couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCall?
I attended the Arts Council. And most of the ribbon cuttings that was done, they didn't make it up to the school. I may have to get another tour of it. But that was about it. And I did attend the Veterans Breakfast. And yeah, and the Arts Council. That was about it.
Great, thank you. I've attended the weekly staff meeting with Mayor Winn. Just echo every time that the staff's excellent here and do a great job. Tomorrow night is the North Tuilla Special Service District meeting that I will be attending. And then we've been recent, I have helped with planning commission interviews. And we'll have some names for our next meeting to present to the council. The council has one planning commission and then an alternate. And then the mayor has one position as well. So that concludes my report. We will move on to our discussion items. The first discussion item is a discussion on UDOT Tuilla Valley Connectivity Study, presented by Travis Hare, UDOT Transportation Project Manager, Emerging Areas, and Jeff Dupay, UDOT Region Two Planning Manager. We'll turn the time over to them.
Thanks for having us. I'm Travis Hare, the Emerging Areas Project Manager, as you noted. I'm here with Jeff. So we may jump back and forth, just as we need to cover pieces of this. Just to, who should I signal to? All right, great. If you can go ahead to that first slides. Just to give you an overview of what we've been working on, we've been working on a connectivity study for the entire Tuilla Valley, mostly focused on 138 and 112. 36 has its own things that need to happen on it, but we were most concerned about these areas, just so that we can try to move people east-west throughout the valley, where 36 is more focused on the north connection. But what we were really looking at is what are, what can the state system carry and what needs to happen locally to make it so that you have options to move around? So just to give you some quick highlights of some of the things we'll cover is just some of the population and employment things that we looked at of how we generated the results of the study. Some of the modeling that we took a look at and really focused on this scenario that we came up with of what the final network needs to look like. You can skip past that one. So it was just a quick timeline. Initially, we were, this was supposed to be about a six-month thing, but we really got into a lot of things with the, with each of the communities. So we talked to, of course, Tuilla City, the county, Grantsville, Erda, Lake Point, where they kind of came into play with some of this. But we really wanted to get those discussions right, and we kept having those discussions. So it kind of pulled out a little bit longer until we're here. So we were going to wrap up in September, and we're here in November. But we are wrapping this study up. So some, just some of the big points of the feedback that we got, really, the main highways, including the state roads and Sheep Lane, are failing and are going to get worse. There's more population moving out to the valley, and so those are, those are going to be really important going forward. Mid Valley Highway is important to the valley, but won't solve kind of those east-west needs that I was, that I was mentioning. They, you know, it's another north-south connection to get you to 80, but it, we need people to move between those. A strong local network with additional connectivity is needed throughout the valley. Growth and development is happening, and more is coming. Utah's estate is growing, and Tuilla Valley is right near Salt Lake, so the valley is going to get a lot more houses. And regional collaboration is really important to the valley in making sure that all of this works. So here's kind of the problem statement that we came up with. There are significant delays on the state network based on the locations of major development. And how will additional east-west routes distribute traffic? Move to the next one. So what we did is we took a look at kind of all of the population employment forecasts that we could get and put them into our statewide model to try and figure out kind of what's, what the current conditions are and what the future conditions are based on what each of the local entities was telling us is planned to happen. So we took a look at the zoning, took a look at, you know, some of the things like the ports and the, and some other developments that we're told actually have, you know, numbers with them that aren't just, you know, yeah, someday, you know, that form will develop, but something that was tangible. So here's just a look at the population growth that we're expecting out to 2050. So you can see, really, throughout the valley, you're looking at about a 50% increase. A lot of that is in Grantsville, just percentage-wise. But you're seeing plenty in Tuilla as well. You're going from, you know, about 38 to 45. And that's just based on, you know, what our projections are of, you know, you're a little geographically kind of bound in from some of the other, other cities now. But, and Grantsville is looking to really increase. You're also seeing a decent amount in the unincorporated county. You know, again, about, about a 25% increase there. And then employment growth is where we really see a lot of change, both in Lake Point, but then as well as, some of those colors seem a little off. I think that that orange is also you at the bottom. But really, again, in Grantsville and around the Grantsville area and in unincorporated, where those port locations are expected to come online. And what that really means for the valley is, right now, you've got a lot of people, most people are probably going out of the valley to work in, in the Wasatch Front and then coming back in the evening. That's going to shift a bit over time, hopefully, is that you're going to have a lot more internal trips, which is great in terms of distance, but also means that you need to have ways for people to move around the valley. So here's some of our traffic forecasts. So the statewide travel demand model is used to forecast kind of the volumes that are in there. Future population employment that just went in, went over is what we put into that model to kind of show where things are going to move and how much that's going to increase, as well as what we anticipate the future roadway network to look like. So then we run simulations, and it tells you each segment what that's supposed to look like. Some of the assumptions that we put in there, when we looked at the model, we, for our initial runs, we only looked at things that were in the long-range plan and had, and were identified. So SR, so these projects, 138 widening, SR1, or SR36 widening, SR112, and then Mid Valley Segment One getting widened and Segment Three being installed. It doesn't, the initial runs did not include the middle segment because that's not currently in the long-range plan as a, as a phased project. It's planned for eventually, but it's not in that plan right now. And then out of that, we came up with a baseline future network. So here's, here's kind of that baseline network that we, that we started with. So you can see that that middle segment isn't there. We also were working on how to connect through that 33rd Parkway, and we'll show that in some, in some additional versions that we did. But this is kind of where we started from. And you can skip that one. So here's the, here's just the existing network as it is right now. Right now, you've got 33,100 daily vehicle hours traveled, so you've got, you know, a decent amount of volume on there. And people that are sitting, you know, not moving in traffic, delayed about 6% of the time that they're in their car. Go ahead. So by 32, you can see that number goes up pretty significantly. So you're now at 53,000, and that delay is now at 8%. So it doesn't seem like a lot, but that does, that is just more time sitting in your car. This assumes that local network, as you see it on the map, gets built. And you can see where those kind of red areas are really along 138, 112, and 36. The state network, as it's supposed to, is holding the majority of that traffic, but it starts to get pretty congested. And then by 2050, that almost doubles the 2032 number. So now you're at 100,000 vehicle hours traveled a day, and now your delay is up to 18%. So you're spending, you know, a good chunk of your commute just in traffic. At this stage, without, you know, further improvements to 36 beyond just the widening and to that additional network, you can see where some of those lines start to get pretty dark and filled with traffic. So here's some of the recommendations that we put in and added to some of the, some of the scenarios. So 33rd Parkway needs to extend through from the west side of the valley, connecting into Durfee and Grantsville. That gives you another continuous length east-west beyond the state network and beyond Erda Way, because Erda Way is not built for that traffic. 2000 North extends through the county along the edge of the Army Depot to 36. So how that interacts with 112, we're going to take a further look at, in the future, because they're kind of close to intersections. And so maybe there's a flyover or some version of something else there. 2400 North would extend to Sheep Lane. East-west connections across the Northern Valley, connecting 38 and, or 138 and Mid Valley. And then really, a lot of collaboration and localized network changes needs to happen to kind of make all of this work together. So here's what that network looks like with those changes. So you can see, instead of, you know, the 2050 number being 18, you're still got to have a decent amount of delay, but you're, but that reduces to 15% instead of 18 and reduces the hours, the hours traveled. And you can see some of those lines just get a little bit lighter. Like, we can't say that that's going to fix all of your issues or that you're not going to have traffic out here in 2050, but we can alleviate some of that pressure by building that network out a little bit more. This also doesn't, this one doesn't show the middle segment yet, right?
No.
Yeah. So this doesn't yet show the middle segment of Mid Valley. I think that's on our next slide. There we go. So that'll take it down a little bit more. One thing to be aware of, though, is that what this doesn't take into account is how that will change the development pattern around that area. Right now, there's nothing there. And so it's, as Mid Valley gets built out, people are going to want to build near that, possibly. So that could change some of the behaviors there and alter that traffic pattern a little bit. It's hard to model when there's nothing really next to that yet. But that does, that does decrease it even further.
Can we talk back, go back a couple of slides? So one of the things that I want to really put particular attention to is what Mid Valley does for 36. So if you can go back one more slide. So you can see SR36 and how long the red, the red is. So what Mid Valley does is it really provides a benefit to 36. But when you look at the valley as a whole, that's, that's one of the things we're taking a look at, and we're saying, more is going to be needed. Mid Valley, it benefits a part of the valley, but it doesn't benefit the entire state network or the local network entirely. So that's, that's one of the things that we want to really highlight. And that's, I know, Mayor, you had a, you had a question about that, that 15% reduction. That, that's, that's really what we're looking at, is how that interacts and benefits valley-wide versus just, you know, some of the main corridors. So that's, what this tells us is that more is, even more is going to be needed to make the network function the way it needs to for the long term. And when I say the network, I'm talking the state roads, I'm talking the local, the city roads, and the county roads. They all have to interact and connect appropriately so that it, the whole thing can work properly. Yeah. So, go back to those next slide. Awesome. Mayor, is that, is that?
Yes, it, it does. But if I could just ask one question then about Mid Valley. You're showing that the Phase Two is, is not in the more recent plans. You're showing a Phase Three, and that is the south end.
Correct.
So we, we have been meeting with Wanley for over two years, monthly, on this Mid Valley Highway. And I specifically asked at our last meeting, what's Phase Two? What's Phase Three? What is this? She explained to us that Phase One is what has already been built. Phase Two is new construction of the remaining portions, not just a middle section, but the whole section clear to 36. And then Phase Three is the widening of Phase One.
And some of that is changed because we've done some additional, additional analysis. So we were, we, we actually had an internal discussion and said, okay, let's strip everything out. Let's, let's compare, let's compare this, what Mid Valley, with, with the rest of the network and where the priorities really lie. And what it's showing us is that you, instead of, instead of just having these two segments, you know, built without nothing, without anything in the middle, really doesn't benefit the overall network. Getting that, getting that middle section down, down to 112 or to 10th North, all the way down to 36 is much more beneficial to the, to the overall network than, than trying to take the, take it in segments like we were originally planning.
Okay. I would agree with that.
So for the purposes of what we were looking at, I think when we initially started this, those phases were referred to differently.
Okay.
So I would, I would say that what the region is talking about and what you've been talking about with the plant, with the people there, is more up to date, but our terms were what was accurate when we started.
Okay.
And so, so Phase One would be the north side, the phase that's already built. Phase Two would be that middle section.
Okay.
Phase Three would be the, the south piece. And that's, at least in the current long-range plan, that's what's still referenced. That is being updated, and part of what this is also meant to do is to update that long-range plan.
Okay.
So, so in the new, in the new one that comes out in '27, those may be referred to differently and likely, from what Jeff was saying, will be.
Okay. So the long-range plan, you say, really will not be updated until 2027?
Yeah. So it's a four, it's a four-year cycle, and the last one was '23.
Okay. So we're, we're just in a really tough spot right now because the county is very much pushing to receive funding and move projects up on a project list that, right now, it's not even on the list, let alone be moved up. But spending an enormous amount of money on lobbying, and we have been working with our representatives to say, we need you to help push this. So this, this whole building of Mid Valley is, not everybody at the legislature gets it. In fact, not even local representatives know. So they've asked us questions. I think that we're not giving them the right answers. What are we pushing for? And what are we pushing to be built? And if it is only that southern section, it's going to be a lot cheaper than pushing to build the whole thing.
Correct.
So we have been telling them, it's the whole thing.
Yeah.
So I think we need to, if the long-range plan isn't coming out for another year, couple, couple of years, what do we do? Do we follow this plan that you have done in this study and say, this is what we're pushing for? Is that end section?
Well, this, this actually does incorporate, if you, if you look, you can see that, you can see the bend down, down to 36, that, that connection. So we, I think we're more in alignment of saying that, it doesn't mean maybe the whole, you know, the, the five lanes all the way through. You know, maybe, maybe it's, you know, let's get, let's get a lane in east direction through here from 36 all the way up to 138. Let's at least get a part of that. So I think there's, there's some, there's still some, some conversations, but it doesn't, it doesn't preclude, you know, if there's still a desire from, from the city side to work on the southern portion, you can still do that. But from what we're seeing, we think it's got to be the bigger piece. That's, that's where the real benefit is going to come in.
And the final map, I think it is including all of it. Like, what we, what we were starting with was, we know that there's at least somewhere, because the long-range plan is so tied to the funding, we could at least assume that, okay, over this horizon, these things are assumed that they're going to get built. So that's where we started. Where everybody, I think everybody in the valley wants all of Mid Valley, that's on the map. That, like, the final map that we're coming up with, that's there. And so I think it's really just how do we, how do you want to talk about that and what's most important? And so, yeah.
I think, I want to just clarify something. When, when we talk about funding in the long-range plan, that, that is based on projected revenues for that, because the long-range plan is broken into three different phases or 10-year segments. And it's the funding projected, the revenues projected to fund projects within each of those 10-year buckets. So, no, it's, it's not, I just, just for transparency and to make sure that we, I'm clear, it's not a guarantee that that's what the revenues are going to be. As you guys know, your budgets, your budgets, you know, fluctuate year to year, right?
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's a good tool to at least say, if we get these types, this type of money or this amount of money, this is where, this is how, these are the projects that we think would be needed to be built within that 10-year period.
Yeah.
If that, if that makes sense.
So, so really, they're just, the question is, I'm assuming this study is going to weigh heavily on what decisions are made by UDOT.
Exactly.
So what do we push for? What are we asking for? And what are we explaining to our legislators of the importance? We have pushed the south end for the past two years and even have an agreement with UDOT that we could help, or we, we could put in the road. But we don't have money either. So if, if there is a possibility that UDOT would do the two-lane instead of the five-lane to get that done, I mean, is that something that would be supported, that we could push for? And?
I think that's, I think that's something that's on, that needs to be on the table.
That would, that's something we could do. Okay.
To, you know, we need to have, we need to have these, these conversations.
Okay.
And, and we recognize, you know, trying, sometimes we have to break things into pieces to get, to at least get the ball rolling.
Right.
But, you know, if, to really benefit the, the network, we're going to need, we're going to need to really go from where it currently ends at 138 and come south.
Yeah. And I think the, the other thing that I would, you know, it's outside of the Mid Valley question. The other thing that all the communities need are those BNC road funds. Like, those are not adequate for any of our communities, really. And so if there's, that's the other conversation I would continually have with your legislators is, how do we get more funding? Because we have to build your, the, the conflict that I see in the offing is, there's all, all this talk about affordable housing, but how do you get the roads to the affordable housing and all the things you need to get the people to where they need to go? Especially outside of the core of the front where there's, you know, more transit available. So that's, that's what I would say is, is pretty much all of Mid Valley is worth pushing for and needs to be on the table, but also keep having that conversation about BNC road funds.
And I just want to, I just want to also add, you know, that corridor, at least in the middle segment, the corridor preservation is huge. Getting, getting that, that identified, that ground purchased, that, that is, that has long-term benefits. Because we, you know, we don't, we don't know what, what the legislature will, will do. But if we, if we can use the corridor preservation funds that we, that we have, now it's on a willing buyer, buyer, willing seller basis, that, but that at least allows, allows things to get locked in. And, and one other thing with, with Mid Valley is it, it doesn't mean that that, that road will then become, you know, another local road with all these accesses like, like what we have on 36. It is meant to be access-controlled at key, at key locations.
Yeah.
Either interchanges or it's. Either interchanges or intersections. And then the local network around there would then, you know, have, have your connections from, from that and from that point.
Yeah.
But, but it, it, it is meant to be access-controlled.
It's, it's a highway, like, much like, you know, Bangator is, is now, but with smaller interchanges. You know, something, something more like that is what, is what that would, would look like. Uh, what else did we have?
Yeah. So here's that network. So it does, it does show, you know, all of those, the, the red lines are, are the principal arterials. You'll notice that, that segment to the north through the county, that is not currently a state road. We're open to discussion on that with the county. That goes through kind of one of those port locations. The rest of the red lines would, would be the state network, other than that segment continuing north on one-twelve. So the red, and then they go down from there, major arterials and collectors from there. But this is essentially the map that we, that we hammered out with all of the local communities. We know that there are pieces, Tuilis doesn't change terribly much in terms of, you know, additional roads. One thing that, that does change is there was kind of that X that goes through where the golf course is slash was, that's kind of in flux. That, you know, straightens out and turns into more standard roads rather than, than that pattern. But then, then there were a few other, other changes as we worked that out, but it, it's pretty, your grid stays mostly your grid with, with what we hammered out with, with all of the communities. So one thing I will say, and we'll get into this further, is there is funding to adopt, to update your plan. My, my TPA manager, Jordan Backman, was very emphatic of like, please, 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 apply to update your master, your transportation master plan. We will give you money to do it. So if you, if you're interested in doing that and working together with the county and ERDA who also need to do this, please get, let's sit down and, and get that out. So there is funding available to do that. So, uh, do you want to?
Yeah.
Jump a couple of slides up? Keep going. You don't care about these ones as much? One more. There we go. So SR one-twelve, we are looking at, you know, widths that we assumed for some of these. And so this is SR, from SR one-thirty-eight to thirty-six, this is essentially what we would, we, what we would anticipate one-twelve looking, looking like for that, for that stretch. So five lanes with a center turn lane and then also including a multi-use path on one side and a sidewalk on the other. There are places where we may need to be more narrow and look at what our options are, especially as we get kind of into, in towards Grantsville where there's some stuff built pretty close to the highway now. But this is what we looked at for that entire, entire length of, again, what we, what we hope that looks like. The other thing that we did out of this is we, we looked at all of the access agreements along one-thirty-eight and one-twelve, just to support that network. We looked at that just because we want streets to line up as much as we can to control those access points and make them safe and not too close to, to each other or offset like you can see in that, that figure at the bottom. It also kind of just protects the roads and so that everyone can expect that these are where their lights go. These are where we need to build the roads to so that as development comes in, we can all be on the same page of where those are expected to go. And it just keeps everything safer. So just a couple of things on, on access management. It's not eliminating accesses. It is just managing kind of where those major access points are. It's, it's managing where those future connections are planned as well as, you know, it's not taking away people's driveways if they already exist. It's just kind of saying, if, as things develop and as things change, we can manage where those accesses are. And then, yeah, next one. So for Tuila City, this is just kind of where we noted the future signals would go. So potentially two thousand north and then about mile post five-point-three on one-twelve, twelve-hundred west, and then at Mid Valley. And then that's, and then just one other thing in here, if you can skip. So there's a lot of funding available. I mentioned TPA to update your transportation master plan to kind of match the network that we had, that we had worked out. But there are a lot of other resources out there to help you build roads, to help you build all kinds of infrastructure items. So we've noted Chris Potter here. He is our local government program engineer. He knows all about, this, this is what he does. He knows about all of these programs that can help you get set up with, you know, if you've got questions about, hey, we want to build a bunch of sidewalks, he can help you with pointing you to the right place. We're happy to help you as well, but this is what he does. And so we're happy to be in on those conversations, but we wanted to give you his contact information so that as things in this study or even outside of it that are, you know, related to the, to these types of things, this is just kind of, you know, the, an initial list, he's a great contact for you to have.
And, and, and just with, just, just so you know, we're, we're aware of all these, but he, he knows all the ins and outs-
Yeah.
And all the nuances for these programs. And we really want to encourage you to, to, to take advantage of, of these as much as you possibly can. You know, I, I heard in, in one of the COG meetings, I think Andy Welch had, had mentioned that for some, some of these programs, we only, they only receive three or four applications. So I, I, I think some of these programs are somewhat underutilized, and we want to encourage the municipalities to, to take advantage of these as much as possible.
Yeah.
Are most of these? Are most of these programs, are they matched? Or do, do we have to match them?
Most of them are.
They, they vary with, sorry.
Oh, no, you're, you're good.
They, they vary with what's the, what the matches are. A lot of, a lot of them are, you know, at least, you know, when I was talking about the TPA program, that's, has a match, but it's like six-point-seven percent. Like, it's pretty, pretty small comparatively. Some of them do get up to, you know, in the thirty, forty percent for some of those larger infrastructure ones. So it, it just varies. It depends on what you're trying to do and what, which program matches what you're, what you need.
And that BNC, which is a state-run, is that one matched as well?
I, I think there's, I, I think that match is smaller. What I'll do is I'll update this list and, and just show what the, what the matches are. I think that would, that would be very helpful.
That could be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I have one last question, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, do you have any connections with the railroad? Because we could really use a couple of extra crossings, the tracks? And any connections there that could possibly help us?
For Union Pacific, we, we do have actually a railroad division to have some of those conversations. So if, if, if that's, if that's something that you're wanting to explore, please, please email me and I'll get Brad Palmer, he's the, he's the director of the, of our, of our rail division. And, you know, we can, we can have those conversations.
Yeah. They're-
The, the one, the one challenge is the, it, it's, it's not law or regulation, but it is kind of how they, they operate. They, they want, if, if there's going to be one access open, there's got to be two closed someplace else. That's kind of the, their modus operandi.
And that's, that's UP. That's not-
Yeah.
So they're, they're a tricky needle in the thread sometimes.
Which that's, that's difficult in Tuila. Tuila City has the rail that runs directly through our community. It splits it in half.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of our traffic issues stem from that. We have the overpass coming into town on SR thirty-six, and there's really no east-west corridors before that. We have two thousand north that goes, starts to go west, twenty-four hundred will run into the temple, and then you're veering off into residential.
Yeah.
And then we don't go east on twenty-four hundred, which I would love to see us have an underpass or overpass going east off twenty-four hundred north and really push traffic east and west sooner in Tuila City. I know that you're looking at the county as a whole, but Tuila City, that's always been a struggle and something we need to address, so.
Yeah. Trying to get over the, over the railroads is, you're right, it's, it's a challenge.
But if they make you, so let's say they, UP says, oh yeah, you can go under on twenty-four hundred north, but now you have to close an access in two locations?
Well, that's, that's for an at-grade crossing.
Okay, okay. Going under or over?
If you're going under or over, that, that, they, they-
They're okay.
Supportive of it, but it's-
How do you pay for it?
You have to fund it.
I know, and it's expensive.
Yeah. So, so it, yeah.
But, but for example, Bluffdale, they just are, they, they were able to work out an agreement with Union Pacific for one-hundred-and-forty-six south, the south end of Salt Lake Valley, because that, that road currently, it's a really narrow two-lane road that goes underneath the tracks. They're actually pun, figured out a way to punch underneath the tracks, keep the tracks open. It's going to take them seven, you know, fifteen to seventeen months to do it, but they were able to work out something. They're paying for it. I think they also got some, some state dollars to, to help with, help with that. But they're, they're working to get, get an undercrossing to carry five lanes through there.
So the state will help with things like that? Like if twenty-four hundred north was going east, the state could help fund going under the rail right there?
I think they, I think they went, I think they went, rather than went through the legislation to-
Okay.
But there's, you know, again, those are, those are conversations that were, have taken, like you said, years, taken years at that time.
Yeah.
Okay, are there other questions?
So it is doable. I want to give you a little bit of hope.
I think the hard part for residents is, we always tell them we have to see growth, right? Because we don't have enough money to go build all these roads. So we talk about how developers come in and they build it, and then it becomes a city property, but-
It, it is, it's really hard. And I think that there, there does come a point, though, where you do have to, it, and it's, you're right, it, the, the money is the hard part because you need those to fund it, but you also need those to exist on some level before that happens to move people around. And it, and it's the same challenge we have, is like, that, you know, that funding of the long-range plan, it's all based on, you know, needs that are now. And, and those ten, even those ones that are out ten years are now because we just, there's not enough money for all the infrastructure we need to build. And so I think one of the challenges too is, as you do get development, is really being upfront and, and holding on to those developers that like, hey, we need you to do your part. You're, you're creating the impact, you need to build it. Like, like if you're, if, if you're building where two thousand north or, I'm, you know, I'm just throwing out a number, is going to go, you need to build two thousand north. Like, and, and, and really holding on to, holding those developers to that is really important.
And that is a challenge in and of itself.
Yeah. And we, and we know that, like, that, around the state, that is hard to do, but it, if you, it, that's how, that's, that's how you get roads. So.
Any other questions?
When you started the presentation, you indicated that Sheep Lane is a failure, is failing.
Yeah.
And so do you consider that to be a state road or is that a local road that you just have to work with?
We, we did not. It is a local road. The reason that we focused on that, though, is that is just carrying so much, especially commercial traffic right now. And it's being used as, as a, as really a thoroughfare for a lot of things, and it's really just a two-lane road. But it, it is carrying a lot compared to what's supposed to be there.
And that's also a reflection of the, the inland part that's going in right, right there, next to the, the sports park, as, as well as there, there's the, the Tuila Valley in the quarter off of Burmese Street.
Yeah.
So it's, that's, that's one of the challenges with, with Sheep Lane being the type of road that it is, the condition of the road that it's in, with no other alternative access. That, and that's, I mean, that's why Mid Valley benefits Sheep Lane up to a point, but it really benefits thirty-six.
Yeah.
Because it gives, it gives another option for people to go up on, on thirty-six. And just to let you know, we've actually been working with, when Lake Point put together their first transportation master plan earlier this year, we actually, you know, at least identified there a potential, another interchange between Mid Valley and-
And thirty-six.
And mile post ninety-nine.
Yeah.
At the TA. Because there's a, we're recognizing as you grow, you know, the, the challenge is, everything's going to high eighty.
Okay.
But having, having some additional points of dispersal can help the system.
Yeah. For, for Sheep Lane, it's that, that area, you know, it's not in Tuila City, but it is, you know, Sheep Lane over to thirty, one-thirty-eight and one-twelve, that kind of triangle that makes right there, is, that's where we're really going to see a lot of crunch as those east-west connections don't get built. Like, that's just, people aren't going to be able to get around that, that area very well if we don't build more connections.
Yeah. That's one of the challenges with having diagonal roads as well.
Yeah.
Because it, it, it changes how that, how the network can, can operate. If, if our region director, Robert Stewart, would have his, you know, he would prefer to see things squared up and, you know, working on straight lines. Unfortunately, I, I don't see that changing with, with one-twelve anytime soon. That's another reason why Sheep Lane is carrying the burden that it's carrying.
Yeah. Because it's just, people are, especially those trucks are going to take the shortest distance when they enter it. They're not going to take, you know, another way around. So.
It's not just the trucks. Tuila City residents are using Sheep Lane as the Mid Valley Highway.
A hundred percent.
And that's what it is.
Yeah.
Is there discussion for a light? That's a dangerous intersection.
Yes.
If traffic gets backed up, when?
Yes, there, there is, there is a light that is planned. We've been working with Tuila County. There, there was some property that we, we figured out at that intersection, Sheep Lane and one-twelve. A light is scheduled to go in next spring.
We just had someone, someone was hit and then had a car accident, passed away recently from that.
I may text me on that.
Yeah. Yeah. We're, hopefully soon, very soon.
All right. Are there any other questions?
I did have more, I just don't know, can you expand upon the corridor preservation and getting that ground purchased? Like, are you working with the county to be able to do that? Or who, who's responsible for that?
That, that is something that is, that is underway. Conversations are happening with the, with the lobbyists to help, to help with, with that, that actual process. We've run into a couple of snags in making sure we've got the right people there at the right time. So we're, we're kind of stepping back for a minute, making sure we get better alignment there so that we can then sit down with the property owners. We can talk through the, in, in more detail, the, the engineering, you know, the drainage, the, the, the amount of property that we need. Talking more through those, those engineering details with the respective property owners. So that, but that process has started and we're, we're just trying to, trying to work, work through that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for, thank, thank you, William, for letting us come.
Can we get a copy of your presentation?
Oh, yes. You already have it.
Good.
Thanks.
But you, but you will, you said you will update.
Yes, I will, I, I will update that graphic and, and get those, get those match percentages in there.
And, and just the funding, the sources, I think that's great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to item six, a discussion item, discussion on amendment to the Tuila City Code seven-nine-two, which restricts people from living in RVs except with approved and licensed recreation vehicle parks, presented by Adrian Day Police Chief.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate your time to come, see if there's interest in your direction and in bringing this amendment, possible amendment forward in a future meeting. We have a, a lot of problems with RVs. I could go off on a lot of examples. It's multiplied since the homeless shelter has opened. It's multiplied since the homeless shelter has opened. This was brought about from the director of the Tuilla County Housing Authority, asking, asking me why RVs are being forced to leave the homeless shelter parking lot because of our code. And I called Switchpoint and spoke to them, and this is already happening a little bit. He apologized for that, the supervisor there. But while they're getting services for those living in RVs, they've been allowed to stay in the, the parking lot while they're trying to get services. And it brought the question, do we want to add item seven, such as in your packet, that was preliminary writing by me, to, to give them time to get services where these RVs are off city streets, private, public property, they're on homeless shelter property where there's access to, which I put in the, in the red, I, I think four things need to exist. They have access to showers, bathrooms, and that daily meal they provide. But also making sure it's a 501(c)(3) organization will, will make it so other private entities can't do this. I don't know your interest, interest in going forward. I don't, I know of two, without researching, I know of two instances where they've called for RVs to be removed because they were not following rules. We didn't know they were there permanently, they, we thought they were just in the parking lot and just wouldn't leave, so we came and addressed both of those. And I saw that happen today in KSL, if you didn't see, West Valley, Switchpoint, overflow shelter, a man was asked to leave and he rammed his van into the, a police vehicle, so. I just want to know your interest in, and this does conflict with our camping code. You can camp on private property no more than five consecutive days, so I didn't put a restriction on days. I think five days is enough days to see if they're getting services and that five days can start over if they leave for a day.
That was going to be my question, is shouldn't there be a time limit?
Yeah. We could.
Should there be a quantity of how many though, too? Because I know right now it might be one or two, but what's saying it's not 10 at some point? So do you restrict the quantity of how many can be there as well?
That's true. That, I think they handle that internally. They don't want to plug up their parking lot and they've done a good job doing it, but will that continue if things change with supervisors? Yeah, we could add, I could look at adding wording to that if.
Because their parking lots out front, it's like on the east side of the building, right? But then does, can't you go behind the school as well? And there's.
Yes.
There's not maybe parking stalls, but there's plenty of area. Are they ever going back there? Has it, has it just been parking lot?
I think in the back, which you've been there also, it's just a drive-through. There's no parking spaces, so they would be blocking traffic. I think this is just in.
The front.
In parking stalls. We've had tents up in the, in the grass, and that has not happened since changes with Switchpoint, that's never happened again, so we've had to address that one. It's been more than five days, but that hasn't even been an issue anymore.
Any other questions or comments?
And how does this address parking on public property? Because we, we have RVs that are parking on Tuilla City properties regularly.
Right, and we do cite quite often, and they move. A lot of times they're getting cited, cited at different places until they get a warrant, and then we, we end up impounding when we're doing arrests. That just happened in Walmart parking lot. She would not leave, she had been there for months. She was stealing from the store to food and stuff, and she had a warrant, we arrested her. It is tough to get impound yards to take RVs also because they don't make any money on them, so that is, that is a challenge we face also.
And, and city properties? Because I'm on the library board, we have regular people that are using the, the library parking space.
Right, and that's, no five days for that, they don't have permission. Yeah, that's a, that's a simple ask, they have 30 minutes to, to move.
Also by the, the swimming pool parking, parking area.
Correct. Yes, I know the names of two that have been there regularly, and we have not seen them for a while.
I just saw a couple of days ago.
Oh, really?
Frequent that, that route.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't change anything on, this will just be private property for those who have these, these four things.
Are there other locations that are a 501(c)(3) that this could affect? We have the, the old hotels, the Natsu, I don't know if that would fall into this. And then I think on Main Street, there's a drug rehab. I know it's not a homeless shelter, but it might still be the 501(c)(3) that.
Correct. Those, those probably would fall under this because they do have access to showers, bathrooms. They don't have.
Does it matter that it says to assist the homeless, like?
But they don't, they don't want to assist homeless, and as I understand, Natsu doesn't provide meals.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want it to open up a bigger.
Can of worms.
Yes.
Yeah, I, they, they, they only Medicare, you have to be on Medicare or.
Okay.
So I just don't see them being interested in that, but that is, if there's wording we need to add, that they don't accept funding from Medicaid, we could do that, too.
I, I just need a little bit further clarification when we talked about the swimming pool property in the library. How long can they be there?
They can't. They don't have.
Not at all.
They don't have permission to be on city property, to be camping on city property.
Okay, for even eight hours or, you know, 12 hours or just zero?
As long as they fit our, the wording in our camping statute, if we can show they're camping, correct, they have 30 minutes to pack up and leave when asked by a police officer.
Okay.
And the, on the agenda, it says licensed recreation vehicle park, parks, parking. Is that, is that referring to like the vehicle itself is licensed, or it's saying, maybe I'm reading this wrong, except within approved and licensed recreation vehicle parks?
Yeah, this.
Saying like in a.
In an RV park.
An RV park.
Yes, two, three, four, five, and six are saying where this can happen, which is, which are included in recreational parks and mobile homes, and what's required in them. So this, seven would be separate from those.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to it if there's a time limit and probably a number of times.
And you're good with the five? If we just keep it at five days?
Seems easier to enforce if it's all the same.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, I'm willing to discuss it again, and I just think we need to make sure that it's, this needs to be black and white and.
Yeah.
Not opening up a can of worms anywhere else.
No room for interpretation.
Yes.
Okay, I'll research a little more and see if we can get some more on there.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, which is a closed meeting. We do have a closed meeting tonight to discuss litigation and/or property acquisition. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go to a closed meeting to discuss, to discuss litigation and/or property acquisition.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. So we will recess here at 6:28 and reconvene in the large conference room for a closed meeting.